Do I start the meeting with what allegiance? What allegiance to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Also, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Dave DeCaddo passing. He was a former coroner and pathogenary of the county, so we'll just have a moment of silence for him. Can I like to move on with the meeting, report of any executive sessions?
We're not counting.
Public comment?
Sure, somebody else wants to talk. All right, Jeff. I gave you the week off last week, so I will catch up today.
Okay.
Jeff Dunkelpalo Alto, speaking of last week, pretty interesting watching it from across the country that everybody else, everybody that spoke last week got more than three minutes. I found that pretty comical. And also, there's a lot of, several times cursing was going on. Nobody got yelled at, nobody got told to be quiet. So, it's pretty interesting how things unfold when it's only on the county side. But we're looking at the agenda today, again, several elected officials said we're gonna stop backdating contracts. Once again, just about every children and youth is backdated. Lisa Stevens does not attend a meeting. She's an alleged criminal under investigation by the Attorney General, never attends a meeting. She could easily put together a spreadsheet when dates of contracts are due and easily have them on there in a timely fashion, but we're gonna continue the practice of backdating, which was supposed to be outlawed by several elected officials that stated that. Also, there's some hiring that's being done inside the courthouse here. When you post these things outside, which I think that's a record number of postings out there on that wall from the last four or five years I've been here. And when they say that there's certain requirements such as a degree, and you tell people that are interested in it not to apply because they don't have that degree, and then you give it to someone that doesn't have the same degree that you just spoke about, and hire the person whose mother also works in that office, that would be called nepotism. Again, another common practice throughout this building, which is still being done. I've had numerous people call me about this one, so I think the hiring practice needs to be looked into, and I think some changes that recently occurred should be tabled or halted because you're opening yourself for another lawsuit. I see that elites on here for something, elite revenue. If you can explain that a little further, doesn't really make a lot of sense, but are they taking more on in the office, are they taking the office over, are they just continuing the tax sales? What's going on there? I don't think they've had a successful sale since they've been a part of the tax claim, and it seems like they're getting more money or more control. So, I'd like to know more about that before you vote on it. And lastly, last week I wasn't here, I was out of town, and Mother Teresa, as she likes to be called, had come here and spoke about some comments that I made about her office the previous week, and she's sick of people speaking about her. Unfortunately, it's the truth. Unfortunately, she's elected official, so it's fair game. Two attorneys did reach out to me, a third one since last week, actually, when I was still away, speaking about how that office is continuing to be a shit show. Why they can't deputize somebody to do things in that office is beyond me. But if you look at my Facebook page, Dunkle for Commish, it's a cheap plug, but the way she altered estates, okay, the way she altered people's estates, manipulated them with TNT liquidations, and her fly-by-night companionship company, there's thousands of dollars in checks that her and her cohorts had written out to themselves. It's all on there, it's all black and white. She used her position in this courthouse for personal gain and to gain customers. I'm not surprised because she was good friends with Mr. Hal Kovac, but she needs to be looked into further, and the truth needs to be out, so thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, George. Good morning. George Stankovich, Palialto, once again, here for senior citizens' rights and veterans' rights. And last week, we found out, Jeff brought out what was happening down West Side there. People are fighting this, they're making comments about it, and nothing's ever being done. I think it's time, I think, I mentioned it to a couple of them, what I would do is get about forty or fifty people and families that are involved in this and go over to Argo's office and demand to see him. He's an elected official, and the state is what's supposed to be taking care of this. Let's get these guys on the ball. I'd even get the governor involved. That's who you should really go after. Maybe something might finally click in their minds and get over there and help these people out. I hate to see anybody suffer like that. And to go through it each and every day of your lives, it's ridiculous. It is just ridiculous. And I hope that we're gonna do something about this food pantry or, and help people that, you know, need help so they have meals. It's a shame in the United States of America that people are starving, starving in the United States. I can't believe this. I cannot believe this. And don't tell me that everything's okay, everything is being put in, all the people have to do is ask and go, and hey, ninety percent of them don't know where to go. And yet, if they ask questions, they're told, oh, you gotta go here, you gotta go here. They're all passing them off, passing a buck just like normal. I think it's time we, we find out who, what politicians are really helping the people. And they're the ones you vote for. And whoever isn't helping the people, get them out. Get them out. Let them go flip burgers and see how it is to get paid minimum weight. What they get paid is a crime. It's a crime. Some of them are billionaires and millionaires, and they're getting these benefits. This is ridiculous. What do they need the benefits for? It's people that worked their whole life, paid into the system, that can't get help. And that has to end. It has to end. We have to see that people are gonna get along better. If you want people coming and fighting and having campaigns to do things at these elections now, at the conventions, you see how people are upset about different things. And it's just crazy. It's just crazy. I know we have freedom of speech so far. They wanna change everything. And believe me, if we keep on going like this, all our freedoms are gonna be a loss. Freedom of speech and freedom of religion, and if state and religion gets together, we're in trouble. We'll go back to the Dark Ages again. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Melinda, stand up, I stand up, touch, I gotta, history pin.
Ladies first, someone else?
Ladies first, ladies over.
Good morning, my name is Mike Miller. I'm from Higgins Township. I made the last meeting here with commissioners. My complaint is I have sixteen acres of land in Higgins Township that adjoins Frank Cromess to have spread biosolids above my property. All this water, this last rain on the eighth and the ninth, I don't know how many thousands, hundred thousands of gallons of pure sludge came across my property. It's laying in my yard. Thank goodness I am getting a little bit of help here from Gary, who was on my property. Poor Gary has a hard time to get around, but he made an effort to come out and see the damage that is done. Thank you, Larry. Larry came to my property and seen the damage that is done. I'm making a personal invitation, Boots. I would love for you to come to my property and see the damage that is being done.
I'll do that.
This isn't right. I've worked forty-five years to get a piece of property that I love. My family enjoys to be there. I have horses, I have grandchildren. But I can't walk around my property anymore. I can't have picnics because of the smell. It's horrible. I went through hell getting a hold of DEP. The erosion experts were, I have a five-foot-deep ditch running through my property for a hundred and fifty yards, and they told me I don't have any erosion. Are we blind? Larry, you seen it. Gary, you seen it. Boots, I can't wait for you to see it. This is disgusting. It has to stop. I took, I took samples, took the samples in. The samples are horrific. My well is twenty feet right now from where there is crap laying in my yard. Disgusting. I know some of you people don't have anything to do with this. Come out. I'll show you what disgusting really is. I want it fixed. Larry, do we have any information that you got for permits?
I'm still, I got, I talked to Conservation District yesterday. I'm waiting for them to get back. I know Gary reached out to them, too.
And I think Stephanie was in contact with you from the Conservation District?
I got nowhere. Yes. Stephanie has contacted me. It's, it's a real shame. I just wanna let everybody know in here where I stand to them.
As far as that Conservation District, I don't think there is any permits that, trying to look back when he timbered back there was that we would be...
With conservation, there is permits for stomping and water drainage. There are, and they better be somewhere. That's where this whole process started. That's number one. That's years ago. So, we should have that information, and we need that information. We need that paperwork. Because this is embarrassing, what I'm going through. I tried everything. Brianna Makar comes from DEP, seriously. She comes on my property with an attitude. What seems to be your problem, Mr. Miller? Well, I have biosolids laying in my yard. It's my property. Okay, well, where's your well, Mr. Miller? My well's a hundred yards on the downhill side of the property. This is your problem, she says. It's coming out of your yard. You're damn right it's coming out of my yard. It's come leaking through Frank's property onto my yard. I have videos, all the videos you wanna see. It's disgusting. A hundred and fifty yards on Frank's property. He put a swale, seriously, put a hundred and fifty yards. It's twenty feet wide and two feet deep. I have it all on my, on my camera. Filled with crap. The numbers were through the roof of the test that I took from Pottsville Laboratory. My well is okay, but it won't be. And when my well disappears, it's sad that I won't have water. Do I have time, or I don't?
You don't.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I guess Boots, I talked to somebody, and I guess DEP is telling, coming up with a stormwater management for there, and as soon as DEP gives it to them, supposedly Mr. Cromess is going to implement their stormwater management plan. We found that out just through making phone calls. And what we're...
Brianna was out that there's a plan, so she gets you probably gonna...
He's gonna implement that plan. Now, what that is, we don't know.
Can I continue for a minute?
Okay, hold on. Then what we're doing too also is, I asked our head county solicitor, I want a letter drafted that's gonna be sent to the head of DEP, the Secretary of DEP, EPA, to the governor's office, asking for them to look at the west end of our county. Because as the crow flies, you have apple soil products, liberty soil products, stowall. Then you have Commonwealth landfill, which I don't know what the tonnage is. It's what, forty-five hundred tons a day, I think, they're allowed to think. Then supposedly this proposed landfill, which as far as I know, I looked into, there's no official record at all, but they're proposing another forty-five hundred ton a day, and they're within five miles of the crow fly. So, that's what we're trying to do next, is we're sending a letter to the governor's office, the Secretary of DEP, the Secretary of EPA, to say, we want you to look at the west end of the county here. That way, we have enough out there. We don't, we don't need any more.
Twelve minutes, fifteen.
We don't need any more landfills, any more of this stuff. So, that's another step we're trying, because that's what we came up with to try to get somewhere. Because you call DEP, they don't call you back. You call, you know, Governor Shapiro's office, it doesn't seem like they're responsible on this, so we're gonna send an official letter from the county. And see if that gets us anywhere. So, we're trying, we're the people with the least authority to do anything. The townships, the townships have their own zoning ordinances, like in Higgins and everywhere. You know, they're, they're the first line of defense. We have no real authority, other than what Hasburg lets us. And we're trying to do as much as we can for the people up the rest of the county. And I know it's not fast enough for you, but we're trying. Like, I'm on Gary every, did DEP get back on sending this meeting? I keep asking if their attorney got back to us about trying to get somebody from the county certified to make reports that are elevated, that they can use in their, their cases, I guess you would say, to see if we can get somebody. Because sometimes DEP, you call them, they take an hour to get out there. Where if we have somebody here from the county, well, twenty-five minutes. Could be there. So, we're trying to try every avenue we possibly can.
This wasn't even, this wasn't trying. I had two trainees come to my house. You know where the other officials went? The important people went to Frank's property.
Yes, what, and I...
I'm sorry.
Mike, what did I advise you to do?
I'm on that, I'm on that, I have to. That's the way it is. That's the way it is.
And that's, and that's what I told you.
And furthermore, if I can elaborate for one more minute, please, I am not gonna ever stop with this because I cannot have my property ruined. I cannot have my well taken. Once my well is taken, I cannot drill another well on my property. It will not work. It will also be contaminated, okay? So, I am not happy with going back to Frank ever spreading any more material on a slope that is like this, that is connected to my property. He put a swale in and put the exit water above my house. He knew what he was doing, Frank. He knew what he was doing. It came out right on my prop, at my house, flooded my house, washed my driveway. We built a home for my son, washed his driveway out. Eight thousand dollars later...
Mike, can I ask you something? When they put the original swale in, were you up there with Johnny directing him, asking him how to put it in?
I was not. The last time, DEP, they, they have...
No, I knew one time you were up asking Johnny to do...
Just recently. I feel so bad for Frank's worker, Johnny. He's the nicest kid in the world at taking for his son. He is so distraught over what to do anymore. DEP, without any plans for a water drainage off of that property, said, just go down and get the water off the property. We need that water off the property. Yes, you do. Yes, you do. All, all this sludge that was laying there, a hundred and fifty feet long, we need that gone. Well, it's gone. You know where it went? You know, a freshwater creek. Thousands and thousands of gallons. Larry, you know. Gary, you know.
Mike, we're trying to do all we can to help there. So, we gotta move on with the meeting. I'll talk to you afterwards, and I'm trying to elevate it to a higher level. I don't, I, we're trying.
I understand that, but...
I will wait, I wait, I have, I am asking to pull your permits for when he timbered, so I'm waiting on them to get them to us. I talked to them yesterday. So, I'm trying to see if there was some stormwater plan in place for when he timbered, should that still be in place. So, and if when I find out, we'll pass it on to DEP and we'll keep pressure on it. That's all we can do.
He cannot be spreading material above here. We cannot have this.
Well, as far as I know...
We cannot have this. You know why?
Has he spread on it since? Because as far as I know...
Yes, at all. I understand.
Because I, you know, I went to natural soils product after I was at the property. I stopped in there, went out the knowing, toured the place, and I told them, I said, until this is resolved, they said they're not gonna give the material to put on that field.
The water, the, the water has to come across my property. No more, no more.
What I'm saying is the stuff isn't, as far as I know, he's not supposed to be spreading stuff.
That's okay, but when this continues, this water cannot be diverted to my property anymore. You know what it's gonna end up? On the main highway going to the creek. Because it's not coming across mine no more. It's already now, it's still coming across my property. Because DEP went ahead and told them to divert this water and get rid of it. You know what I mean? Again, across my property. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Melinda Dibert, North Mannheim Township. I'm gonna try not to yell at you today, Larry. I know how that gets under your skin. Okay, to reiterate, before biosolids, and we'll call them biosolids, but I have a feeling what Mr. Miller received onto his property was actually raw sewage sludge. You cannot actually call it biosolids in the state of Pennsylvania until it has been treated, and different trace elements have to meet a certain level. Pathogens, which could include bacterial, viral particles, et cetera, all have to be within a certain range before you can call it biosolids. Looking at Mr. Miller's water test results and the test results that he received from what, the samples that he took from his property, I don't think we can call that biosolids. But before a farmer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania can apply biosolids to their crops, and just so we're all aware, it can be applied to food crops for humans. So, let's make sure that we are aware of that. Frank Cromess, over a year ago, at a coffee and conversation meeting, stated that he puts that stuff on everything. It's like Frank's red hot sauce. He puts it on everything that he grows. Whether that is corn for livestock, it could be sorghum, that's gonna go into perhaps bird seed, you know, that type of thing. Or whether he's growing wheat that he will then sell to companies that are gonna use that wheat to grind up into bags of flour that we will go to our local grocery store and purchase right off of the shelf. I'm not sure if Frank is growing any soybeans at this time, but if he does, he puts it on that, too. He's not, he's not growing any? You know that, Larry.
I said I don't know. I only saw corn.
Well, and soybeans go into all kinds of things. So, tofu, soy, soy milk, et cetera. He puts it on absolutely everything, and it has been approved by the Department of Agriculture that it can be used on food crops for human consumption.
Did the county approve it?
The county cannot put an ordinance or a statute in place, which would be more restrictive than what the Commonwealth, and you might talk to your solicitor about that. The county cannot put anything more restrictive than what the Commonwealth already has in place. No, you may not.
That's right.
But before Frank...
And that's what I've been trying to say. You come here, week after week, and we're trying to help these people. And but do you go, do you go, come on, do you go, and I'll give you your time back. Do you go to the township meetings every week? Have you been to?
Every, they don't have them every week, but I have attended township meetings.
Well, every, every township meetings, they have it. All around those entire communities. Because they're the only, okay, do you, how many letters have you written to the governor's office? Have you called the governor's office?
How many of you?
I've been in contact with the governor's office twenty times.
I would think, as a county commissioner, you have much more sway than just an average every day to... Now who's yelling? Now who's yelling?
The Governor Shapiro's office does not respond. Obviously, they do not respond, Gary. Drew Poppus just does, and it goes to him and dies. And he was a former county commissioner, and you think Governor Shapiro would care more about the counties? He was a former county commissioner. So, we're going to his agencies, his appointed people, and it falls on deaf ears. We can't even get them to set a meeting. We called ten times. Okay, we're gonna do, we have to have a Zoom meeting first. They cancel it. We have to have a Zoom meeting next week. They cancel it. And you know what? We called, they're there today. We can't hit them. Hey, listen, we wanna have this meeting. Oh, we gotta wait till we can do it. So, yeah, and we are trying. You portray that we are not trying to fix any problem or help anybody at all, and anyone, no, you do.
No, I do not.
You come up here and say it, and we are trying as hard as we possibly can to help the people in the west end county within our powers. I, I, I went up to Higgins, I was on my property. Gary went up there. Boots was at NSP. Gary was at NSP. I was at NSP. We're trying. And these people, when I showed up, they were scrambling because they were fearful that I showed up, and I'm telling them. Like, we're trying to help. You come in here, at least try to say, at least we're working on it, give us some credit, and work with us instead of looking at us a combatant all the time. Because week after week, it's, you don't do this, you don't do this. You can call this one, you can do this.
You are incorrect. I have not said that, Larry. I most certainly have not. What I'm attempting to do during my three minutes this morning is to actually educate the Board of Commissioners, because I think there was some misunderstanding that you stated, that you didn't think that biosolids could be applied on a field that was gonna be used for human consumption.
For direction of the construction.
Yes, it can be. Contact your Department of Agriculture.
Okay, I'm gonna have to...
Boots knows, Boots knows the answer to that.
I don't know if it is, but I don't, I was understanding that it's not allowed to be used for direction.
And I'm not sure if you understand, again, for educational purposes, before Frank applied biosolids or raw sewage sludge to that twenty acres above Mr. Miller, he had to have an active and approved soil conservation plan that he would have submitted to DEP. Was that in place? Because he absolutely has violated the law if he did not have an active and approved soil conservation plan in place.
Approved by?
DEP.
Okay. We're getting back to a common, we're getting back to a common thread here.
There you go.
That is DEP.
There you go.
DEP. We do not control DEP. The governor's office does, our state legislators, I guess, and our state senators.
Okay, well...
They control DEP.
One, one last question.
And they're a point, you know, right now is the best time, and I'm gonna give everybody some free lunch. Right now is the best time to contact every senator, everything, because Governor Shapiro has to appoint a new DEP secretary and has to get approved through the Senate. So, right now, if you wanna voice your opinion, right now is how you get somebody in there, maybe, that'll look at the west end of the county like we're trying to get them to, that it should be a dumping ground for everything. I wouldn't wanna live out there. I've standard before. I feel bad for these people that they can't enjoy their property. But the right avenue, we're trying. So, we'll work with you, but we're elevating it as high as we can. I, I, if I can, I'll try to get a, a meeting with Governor Shapiro. The last time I talked to him about mental health issues, he walked right away from me. Because he didn't wanna hear what you had to say.
One question. Do you know who actually does the testing of the product?
Yes.
When Frank Cromess sends his trucks over there...
His own testing. NSP does their own testing. I know. I know they're relying on their own tests for DEP.
So, according to the samples that Mr. Miller pulled, it looks like NSP is also deficient in doing their own testing because... in doing their own testing, because those samples have to fall within the criteria that is outlined, and this comes from Penn State Extension. So, if you'd like a copy, copy of it, or if you want me to send you the link, I can send it to you. It outlines quite clearly all of the trace elements and the ranges that those have to fall into. Uh, the bacterial load, et cetera. So, NSP has to do that testing. I, I'm saying it looks like they're deficient in their testing, just based upon the results that Mr. Miller received. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm Wendy Maidenford. I live out in the dumping grounds of the West End. Where every, everything imaginable, what kind of ways, is dumped out there. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, you're going through this. We don't wanna go through, we know what we're going through right now. I don't wanna go, go through what you're going through. I have to worry about my water. And eventually, people need to know. He might have his water, you know, contaminated. He's not gonna use it. This can happen to any one of us in here. This, this, we need to feel for him, because you think this isn't gonna reach you. It's gonna reach you sooner or later. I don't know if you people do research in other states, the devastation it's doing, and the contamination, the farmers being affected. I mean, people gotta start waking up and doing research and seeing what's going on nationwide. This can happen to you. This, this isn't, you think this is just gonna happen to us, cause it's in our area? It can happen to any one of you in here. It will reach you eventually. And if it don't reach you through the water, it's gonna reach you through the food. And I need to back something up with Melinda right now. Um, Frank Kramas, I attend the meetings. You get, once I go to the township meetings, I've been to Fraley, I've been to Higgins, I've been to Porter. I was at the one meeting where Frank Kramas was asked to attend to our Porter Township meeting. I asked him directly, where is his product going that is grown in these sludge fields? He precisely told me, Larry, the feed, the corn is going for animal feed. The sorghum is going for bird feed. The weed is going to flower mills he sells it to. So, we could all be eating that. Think about that. I just need, people need to, I've researched. I've re, I've done research on DEP, EPA, and I'm sorry. Political, forget it. They only do whatever they can get a pat on the back for, or what, or to move them up the, up the food chain, you know? I, I, I'm not for it. Not for it at all. I don't trust them. I don't trust DEP. I don't trust EPA. I found where they, where they have whistleblowers. I found, I've researched it, researched it all. I found where some of the, uh, people that work for DEP or EPA, they end up going for these waste companies and working for them. I found it in my research. That's why I have no trust in them. And I am happy that yous are trying to help me. I, I appreciate it. I, I'm sure a lot of the people out our way do appreciate what you can do, and I know there's only so much you can do. But I, I suggest a lot of people start researching this stuff and see what's going on nationwide. Cause this is gonna happen in your backyard, and we have a lot of farming industry here. It's not good, not good. I don't care what you tell me about this sewage lake. It's not good. That's it. Thank you.
Melinda, public comment?
Okay, now we'll move on with the meeting. Children, you? I don't know. The only time you say a name, it's not that close.
Carl Rumble, Assistant Administrator, Children, Youth. We have five agreements to present today. First item, we're requesting approval of an agreement with Elbell Properties LLC, Quitztown, Pennsylvania, for lease of apartment unit number, uh, let it see, located at twelve fifty-one Mathieu Hope Avenue, Pottsville, for temporary family and transitional housing needs, the monthly rent amount of one thousand dollars, and with the term October first, two thousand twenty-four to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. We're requesting approval of an agreement with Friendship House out of Scranton, Pennsylvania, for Cloud Home Residential Placement Services at a per diem rate, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents for the term July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. We have an agreement with Children's Home of Easton, out of Easton, Pennsylvania, for community-based residential services. Per diem rates as follows: residential, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and five cents, shelter at three hundred thirty-three dollars and nine cents, group home at three hundred eight dollars and nine cents. Ziggman Hall Specialized Settings, uh, placement location is at five hundred ninety dollars and forty-seven cents. This provider also offers foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Level one is at one hundred nineteen dollars and four cents. Level two is at two hundred dollars and sixty-nine cents. And this agreement is for the term July one, two thousand twenty-four, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Requesting approval of an agreement with the Institute for Human Resources and Services Incorporated from Kingston, PA, for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Traditional foster care is at sixty-five dollars. Medically needy is at seventy dollars. Respite is at sixty-five dollars. And this agreement is also for the term July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Finally, we have requesting approval of an agreement with United Charities Incorporated of West Hazelton, Pennsylvania, for community-based residential services with per diem rate of one hundred eighty-five dollars and independent living services with a per diem rate of two hundred fifty dollars, and that also is for the term July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Carl, you do have a question?
Sure.
Why aren't those backdated?
Happy to answer that. Essentially, what we need to look at with our residential foster care service providers is that those rates are contained in a, a bucket of sorts uh, through budget submittal that's made to the state. The state reviews those budget packets, and then we need to look at what's approved for state and federal participation from that process as our effective cap. There has been exactly one provider in my tenure of having anything to do with children and youth contracts where, uh, the rate went above that amount. And that, that ends up being a local commitment, uh, very specialized service in that instance, and I believe I made that clear for the record at the time. Um, so, the state process is a process that's outside of our control.
So, as the state sends this stuff to you guys, that's why it has to be backdated, because they don't have it to you before July first?
It happens frequently, yes. Yes. Uh, I will also share that there are various levels of safeguards internal to the county uh, and external. Uh, first, our, all of the providers who offer foster care services work not just with Schuylkill, but with many counties, and, um, uh, so they're going to be submitting, uh, information to us that they know has been state-approved, and they, they understand that. Um, our contracting process involves a caseworker, three, myself, uh, we look at all that information. Uh, we, we, uh, understand fully that we're not going to pay out on any rates until there is a, a contract in place signed by the county board. The providers understand that as well. Um, our fiscal department, before they're going to process an invoice and send it up to the courthouse here, they're gonna look at, see that there's a contract in place that has been entered to our information system. Same thing on the invoicing end, when that fiscal department staff looks to obtain funds from the state and from the feds. They're looking to see that there's a signed contract in place. And before any of those check requests go through, uh, I'll share that our county also has the additional layer of a fi, finance department. And I anticipate that smaller counties don't have that. They'll look at and be sure that there is a signed contract in place. That's the essential function of the controller's office as well. Uh, and so, um, I'm confident that we don't pay out on anything until it's executed by the board. That's a requirement under the county code. It's also a requirement under our regulations. So, um, the matter of backdating to July first, I would characterize it as a convention that helps to make sure that payments made after the fact fall into the correct bucket to ensure the maximum amount of state-federal participation in those, in those costs.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. Grant Rivers?
Okay. Uh, I have approval for a resolution to apply for the two thousand twenty-four Emergency Solutions Grant in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars on behalf of the Schuylkill Hope Center in service to all. Approval of a change order number one to the contract with Cass Contracting for five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, increasing the contract from twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars to twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. This is the demolished garage that was located on the property, which is in irreparable condition. Approval to advertise for a request for qualifications from qualified engineering consulting firms for the CDBG program for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Approval of a revision to the two thousand twenty CDBG program moving seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-one cents from the Minersville demolition line item to the home rehab. Approval of a revision to the two thousand twenty-three CDBG program moving fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Wayne Township Home Rehab Line Item to the Park Line Item. Approval to advertise for a CDBG project at the North Middle Ward Playground in Tamaka. Bids will be done via Penn Bid and must be submitted by nine AM Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, at which time they will be open. Uh, the other thing is, there was a bid opening this morning for Shenandoah CDBG Improvement Project, Street Improvement Projects on Oak Street, um, along with some other streets that are using, uh, liquid fuels and other general fund sources.
Thank you. Mary?
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Um, this morning, I am seeking approval to advertise for bids for the repairs to County Bridge sixty-four Valley Road over Deep Creek, Deep Creek in Higgins Township. Bids will be received online via the Penn Bid Program by the Schuylkill County Control until nine AM prevailing time on Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. With the results, we'll report those on the, at the work session on Wednesday, September eighteenth, with the tentative, uh, bid award on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. And I'm asking for a motion today so that we can get that advertised and bid.
Can I have a motion? If I don't make a motion, we advertise for bids for County Bridge sixty-four. Second? Another question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heather Eton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And the next item is, I'm requesting approval to extend the reimbursement agreement with the Reading Northern and Blue Mountain Railroad until October second, two thousand twenty-six. This agreement is associated with the replacement of County Bridge one twenty-three on Broad Street in Port Clinton. We, the, the railroad, any work that needs to be done on the railroad as a result of our bridge project, they must do the work. They tell us they must do the work, so we have a reimbursement agreement, and because that has been delayed and now we're in the process, and we awarded the bid.
When is construction technically supposed to start on this?
Well, we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting. Uh, we're looking at the sixth, the weekend, the sixteenth. We did, we did not have that scheduled yet, but I, I anticipate H and K is right down the road doing some other work, so, um, they're available, and I hope that we started soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, the Defender's Office? Morning, Karen.
Hello.
I'm seeking approval of a contract with Spartan Technology Solutions to supply new case management system for the Public Defender's Office at a cost of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for a one-time software cost and eleven thousand, six hundred dollars in annual support in two thousand twenty-four, followed by eleven thousand, six hundred dollars in annual support for two thousand twenty-five. This system is part of the Indigent Defense Grant.
Thank you. Sheriff's Office, or whoever.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner.
Sheriff, duty, Sheriff's Office. Commissioners, I'm requesting a motion to approve the lease purchase of three new vehicles. That K and A SUV police interceptors from Miracle Ford in Tamaka. It's a Coldstar's approved vendor. The lease purchase will be through Mount Shung Trust Company and Jim Thorpe. The proposed items for free vehicles are as follows. The marked lease fifty-nine, five, forty, fifty-five at a rate of five point seven zero. Name is annual principal, including interest, fourteen thousand, zero, five, oh. Also, unmarked for fifty-seven, eight, thirty-nine with the same interest rate. With that said, in the past twelve months, we've converted five cars in two thousand and eight Expedition we had to put out of service, in two thousand and eight Dodge Charger out of service, two, two thousand and eleven Crown Vix, and one two thousand and fourteen Taurus that was demolished that we reimbursed with the insurance company on that. This was recently approved last year. The money's in the budget. The reason we ordered them right away in January because of the shortage, the industry, we had to wait for twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Office of Senior Services?
Morning, dear.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deanna Losky, Office of Senior Services. Uh, approval to return state caregiver funds in the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, the funding for this is categorical, uh, so, uh, not only our agency, but agencies throughout the state have a hard time spending that money, and that's, uh, the reason for the return. And we did get additional funding from the state for that program. Uh, approval of an addendum with Caregivers America LLC of Clark Summit for personal care services to extend the contract another fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. The contract cap of four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars will remain the same as prior fiscal year. Uh, approval of an addendum with WA Two Incorporated Doing Business as Family Home Medical Support Services, a Mount Carmel PA for personal care, uh, to extend the contract another fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. The contract cap of hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars will remain the same as prior fiscal year. Uh, approval of an addendum with Maximum Care of Whitehall for personal care services to extend the contract another fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. The contract cap of eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars will remain the same as prior fiscal year. Um, approval of a three-year contract for the fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven with Maxima Care of Whitehall PA for registered nurse services for, for our protective service program. The rate per hour is fifty dollars. The contract cap for each fiscal year is a thousand dollars, with, with an overall cap of three thousand. Thank you.
Dragan Alcohol? Good morning.
Good morning. Asking for an approval for the contract addendum for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with Inpatient and Halfway House Provider Avenue's Recovery Medical Center, which contains an updated appendix B to show rate adjustments for the facility and the services provided. Approval for an addendum for Pyramid Healthcare Incorporated to increase their contract cap from six hundred and fifty-one thousand to seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Approval for an agreement with Center for Community, excuse me, Center for Community Resources for Clinical Coordination Services to provide coverage seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, for the period of June first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, for a contract cap of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Approval for an agreement with Center for Community Resources for construction of a recovery center, the contract cap is to not exceed a hundred and seventy thousand for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Approval for an agreement with Y Kim Architects, um, Pottsville for an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand, two hundred dollars for the professional services as listed below. Thank you.
President?
Morning, morning.
Good morning. David Lipinski, Warden, School County Prison. Seeking approval of a contract with Universe Wilmington for general and cleaning supplies for the county prison. Term is September first, two thousand twenty-four to September first, two thousand twenty-nine. The cost is per usage as outlined in the contract agreement. There is an annual three percent increase.
Court Administration? Morning, Mary.
Good morning.
Mary Timpani from Court Administration. We are asking for approval of a proposed amendment to contract twenty twenty-two dash three hundred. The June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two Independent Counsel Agreement is amended to provide that all attorneys appointed on or after the date of this amendment to represent those persons charged with crimes committed within a state correctional institution within Schuylkill County shall be compensated at the rate of one hundred and twenty dollars per hour without being subject to any cap on maximum fees. Thank you.
Solicitor's Office?
Morning, Commissioners. Paul Dotty, County Solicitor, on behalf of the Solicitor's Office. We're seeking approval to authorize and direct the Solicitor's Office to prepare and advertise an ordinance pursuant to section sixty-eight, sixty, point two oh one A of the Real Estate Tax Sale Law to accept the proposal of Elite Revenue Solutions LLC to be appointed the agent for the Schuylkill County Tax Claim Bureau under- for the Schuylkill County Tax Claim Bureau under the provisions of the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, the specific terms and conditions of which will be incorporated in an agreement between the county and Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, which agreement will be subject to further approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, under the proposal, uh, the, uh, Elite Revenue would essentially take over all of the functions of the Tax Claim Bureau. Uh, there would be a transition period. The Elite Revenue will receive the fees established under Retsel, the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, for managing the Tax Claim Bureau. Uh, and they attach the schedule for specific fees that are not covered by the, um, the act itself. Um, Elite Revenue will fund all operational expenses and advanced costs so that we know cost to the county. It's also anticipated that Elite will operate out of the existing offices of the Tax Claim Bureau. Uh, Elite will work with the county in offering job positions for the current employees of the Tax Claim Bureau. So we are currently in the process of, uh, finalizing the form of agreement, which again will come back before the Board. But under Retsel, uh, appointment as agent is, is required to be done via awardments. So this is basically the procedural component that would permit us then to move forward with the formal agreement. It's also anticipated there will be a lease of the, uh, of the facilities. Um, and that will also come back before the Board for approval, so, subject to your questions, I'm sorry.
And this, and this was done in conjunction with the Director of Tax Claim, the Assistant Director of Tax Claim. They, we all sat down and talked about this and believe this is the right way to go.
It was actually done at the suggestion of, uh, the Director.
The Director of Tax Claim. And try to get the office running smoothly and the backlog and everything straightened out. This is the only way the, the Director thinks this is the only way that we can go to get it straightened out.
And with that, the, uh, was the union contacted as I know there's?
They were.
Me and I.
Yes, they were contacted, uh, offering a, a meet and discuss session, which is what's required under the collective law in the agreement and under, under legal law. So I anticipate they will make that request and we'll certainly honor that. This is a bit of a process, as you imagine. We, we do need to recognize the union's, uh, rights to, uh, meet and discuss with respect to the. But it, it's anticipated right now that Elite will hire all the employees in the, in the office. Union and our union.
Yeah, as far as I know, the office, everybody. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Treasurer's Office.
Good morning Commissioners, Wendy, I care County Treasurer. I'm going to look to submit my, uh, Treasurer's Report for month ending August, or I'm sorry, July 2024. Ending balance and all accounts, $107,444,919.36.
County Administrator's Office here, so.
Approvals requested to enter into a contract with Hubert Resources of line missing for employee recruitment services on an as-meeter basis.
Uh, final call.
Uh, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, this morning there's seven budget adjustments that are listed on the agenda and the seven budget adjustments have been posted outside.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Human Resources?
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. The tax claim, we have the appointment of Deborah McDonald as a clerk practice one per DM. The rate is 15.8913, effective 9/3/24. And children, youth, the appointment of Jane Schallerberger as a county caseworker one. The rate is 20.9412, effective 9/3/24. So this is per the union contract. Informational item, Court Administration, the appointment of Raymond Norian, law clerk per DM, effective 9/3/24. All equipments are pending drug tests and physical were appropriate and all actions involving salary or proposition being created are pending salary board approval.
Okay, what about? Approval to clarify, counties.
Uh, approval to clarify, yes, we have the, uh, county health benefits regarding reimbursement for medical care, Part B payment and, uh, the proposal is to use a standard monthly amount on a prospective basis beginning September 1, 2024.
I have a few questions on that. On what does the policy state now? So if you're saying it's adding spend, it doesn't have standard in it?
That is correct, that rate can vary. So this, uh, this commits us to using the, the standard rate.
And this isn't going to affect anyone that already has the, uh, the thing that are currently retired and receiving an appointment? This is moving forward?
That is correct.
Do you want to understand?
Yes, sir.
And about how many employees are, are hit with that area, just in case?
I don't, uh, I don't know that I can know that prospectively.
Okay.
So I, I don't have an answer to that.
And again, I know I noticed a disparity from it. I was just wondering how that disparity came with a, a number of them to what, what's there now? Does anybody know that?
Uh.
How that came about from where most of them weren't in the standard?
Yeah, the Medicare rates can vary.
Yeah.
And that could be based on what we know, but, um, other employment that they would have, um, when the interpretation is made.
It's quite a standard, everyone will see the same. And it would be capped at a maximum rate, right?
Uh, it's not a maximum rate.
But every law is going to be standard, right? Every law is going to stand opposed to a variance by now. Yes, every law we treat is the same way.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else to do business? Sorry, you want? What is the main objective, that is? Where did I help? On the comment, Saturday word?
Jeff Donco Palo out though. Again, I'm just curious about this hiring practice where a degree is required. Is, is, if a solicitor, a degree is required, who makes the decision to take that off the table? So if we could look into that, I'd appreciate that because there's people being turned down and told not to apply for a position and then it's awarded to someone that it's nepotism. So these are open to yourselves for a lawsuit. I'm just warning you like I've had before and you just ended up in lawsuits, but you just didn't listen. Number two, Mr. Miller, that's horrible what you're going through out there. Uh, and boots won't go to your place, I'm telling you right now. He won't go. He, he's already admitted a coffee and conversation that his family uses biosolids and wastewater slug. And, and then, excuse me, excuse me, I'm, excuse me.
That's not true.
Excuse me, you did, you did, you did. It's on record, I have the video of it. You admitted it, yes. I said his family, because it's exactly what I just stated. His family admitted it, okay? He admitted his family. Uh, we bring up the Carbon County Farm, was it Never Done Farms, right? You want to advertise it now? We will, you were the one that stated. And also his biggest donor during his election campaign for Commissioner was Mr. Crumb's. So he's not going to come out there. So this landfill letter that you're discussing, I think that's a great thing. Also include the biosolids, have them come in and look at the way that they're being applied, that they're being.
Jeff, I said that.
Okay.
We're gonna.
When I heard you say it was landfills.
NSB.
Okay.
How they're all clustered in that smaller.
Okay.
I did say that.
Frank Crumb's is wreaking havoc out there in the West End, okay? And again, between being his, his biggest donor and then he had an intimate relationship with Joanne Stare in the past, nothing's going to get done. He's in every, everybody's in his pockets. So good luck, Mr. Miller, you got a fight ahead of you, but it seems like you're going to do your best to continue doing that. Uh, this Elite Revenue thing, that's interesting that they're going to take over the whole office now. They haven't had a proper sale since they started. Now we're going to award them, it's almost like the reassessment. Reassessment, that company changed names five times, I think, were sued how many times? We award them with a reassessment for $12 million. Now Elite's going to take over.
So this is, I mean, run that.
I, I get it.
Under their recommendation and having meetings with them.
I get it.
And they believe that you said they were the two people we needed to be brought back.
Hundred percent.
You said it and numerous means these are two people we need to be brought back to fix this office.
Right.
This has done with numerous discussions with them and law, every step of the way. They initiated this and they think this is the best way to clear that off. So, and once we have it straightened out, we can roll it back.
My question is, how long is this going to?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, but once it's straightened out, but even you have stated numerous times.
And, and.
And this is an Elite Revenue's fault that stuck.
Whose fault was it? That's what I was, that's what I'm getting at right now.
I don't know. It was because the shortfall in the office of not being able to fill positions because we had two people out on the suspension.
Right.
And now they're back and they are doing a great, and I'll, I'll state this both. They're doing a great job.
As, as, as they always have.
Yeah, that's, but that's before my time.
Right.
But there, I have no complaints with them. They're doing a great job, but you know, still, they, they have a ton of work that we need to get all caught up.
Well, we all seen the mountains of paperwork. I mean, that, that's.
But this is.
They're probably not even half of there yet.
We're trying to fix the problem.
I get it.
And this is with them and law completely.
Right. I, I know you said that, but what I'm saying is there's a reason why this occurred. It's because we're too worried about sending emails out about Twinkies and not doing your damn job. And then there's mountains of paperwork. And I'm sure they're not even a tenth of the way through that. I mean, it's insane, the stuff that.
Well, they're actually.
People are, people are still waiting on stuff for two years ago.
They're doing a great job.
I know they are, I know they are.
I, I.
What I, what I could say is.
Class, age, throw and throw.
What I could say is from going to the sales for many, many years, I don't remember seeing not even 5% of the people in there at a tax sale. You could tell the minute that those two women left to the time that they weren't. It was a disaster. So I agree with you.
I could only do something about the future and the past.
I hope they could take it back over once things get straightened out. And lastly, did we ever get a balance on the arbitrage?
Eight, eight point four million.
Eight point four is left, not earmarked for anything, right?
No, it's all committed.
It's all committed.
I have it here now. And I did provide this before in January, I think I provided.
Well, there's been money spent since then, but.
Yeah, but I have it here.
But everything's earmarked that's left.
Everything's, as far as I know, everything is committed.
I'll get a copy of it. Thank you.
You got to make that final, just so you know, we have to make that final.
By the end of the.
Earmarked by the end of the year.
Okay.
And if something changes.
Right.
It has to be, it's just, uh, eight, uh, eight up to, is it the 26?
Yeah.
The first, the, the end of the 26.
Obligated by that.
Right, but then it has to be.
There's, there's a window that will allow it to span down. The key is obligated.
Right, right. But there's a time when it has to be spanned out.
That is correct, yes.
Any other public comment for Saturday word?
Melinda Diver, North Mannheim Township. Um, so to get back a little bit on this educational thing. So, uh, again, to reiterate, do not come here and say, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, blah, blah, blah. I, I might give some suggestions as far as, um, things that you might look into or that you might pursue. Uh, I do not come here to harangue. I come here to try to give you options, suggestions, ideas, and also to educate. Uh, because I understand as a county commissioner, you guys have a lot on your plate. You have to try to keep up with all the different agencies, departments, offices, et cetera, run the courthouse. Um, you know, you, you got a lot on your plate. And that's why I have reached out, I believe, to all three of you before and have said that if there's anything that you want me to look up, you want me to research, you want me to come in and give you just a little bit of the knowledge. And again, Wendy, Shirley, Tammy out in the West End, those girls have spent hour upon hour researching, looking into things, I'm telling you, they, they could run you ragged, updating you on everything that's going on with biosolids. There are currently only two states in the union that have outlawed the use of biosolids.
Maine and what's the other one?
Uh, it's going to be Connecticut. It takes effect in.
Hold on, so I did research on this, I'll give you your time. So Maine outlawed the ban of all spreading the biosolids. They are now shipping all their biosolids from tray, on train to Canada. They increased their sewage fees for all their people by 100 fold. The cost went through the roof for it. We all produce waste. We all produce the stuff. And I'm sorry, if you want to do research, look into Singapore, what Singapore does with all their biosolids and garbage. That if I would try to get approval for that, I guarantee a DEP would be here in two seconds screaming at me, stop. Look into what Singapore does with their biosolids. If you like to do research, because I looked into this and read just about everything on it. The only state that kind of did it right so far is Minnesota, where they went after the point source. Because it's not the problem really with biosolids, it's what's in the biosolids. And they stopped the point source of PFAS and Farber chemicals by 85% in the state of Minnesota. And there's still land applicating their biosolids. They're still doing it all the same way, but they went after the point source of it. Minnesota or Maine by banning biosolids has created disaster for themselves. They filled up all their landfills in one year. They filled them right to the top. Now they're shipping all the biosolids out and so everybody is paying a fortune more for, for their sewer fees because they have to incorporate that shipment to Canada. Canada's taking everything. Our biosolids from our state go down to Alabama. Philadelphia now ships our stuff all the way down as far as Alabama. So it's a problem everywhere. There has to be some type, we all produce sewage. Every time you flush your toilet, unless you have a septic system for a sand mound, you're contributing. Our sewage has to be treated and taken somewhere. They have to come up with common sense solutions for it. Is, is spreading it on fields, right by people's properties the right thing? I don't think so. But Singapore incinerates all of it and produces electricity out of it. They take all the garbage and their biosolids because there's BTUs in it and burn it. But if I would say, hey, we want to put an incinerator here in Schuylkill County, DEP, I guarantee it, they'd be here at the next meeting, sitting all in the front row with lawyers.
Well, I guess the people.
Yeah. But so I have done a lot of this, like, I, I understand it and we're trying to do as much as we can.
Okay. One way that the county commissioners could, uh, put, put a little bit of pressure or look into things. Um, the County Conservation District is actually the one who oversees Title 25, Chapter 102 of the Pennsylvania Code, Erosion and Sediment Control. And I'm not sure if Mr. Miller has.
What was the other one? Twenty-five what?
Title 25, Chapter 102, Erosion and Sediment Control.
Okay.
So I did stop by there last Wednesday after our meeting. I did stop by there to, I believe Stephanie was out of the office. I did speak with Janelle. Um, she stated that Frank Crumb's did not have any kind of plans submitted to the Conservation District, whether that would be stormwater management plans, ENS, MPDES, nothing. Uh, but she stated because he did earthmoving activities on less than 25 acres. 25 acres would be the threshold. Uh, because it was less than that, I believe around 20 acres, he was not required to submit the plans to the Conservation District, but he does have to have them on hand. He already has to have those plans done. And whether he has an engineer or has someone review over them to put their stamp of approval on them, those have to be in place prior to the timbering activities that he did. So then, once he got into the biosolids, because it's my understanding, he timbered that maybe three, four years ago, whatever. It was timbered, he pulled all the stumps and everything out. And then the biosolids applications just started recently. So that would be the plan, the soil conservation plan that he would already have to have in place prior to laying that first bit of.
That's what I called about, that's what I called him about on Monday and they're trying to find a figure.
From the Conservation District?
Yes.
For that Chapter 102.
And Larry called him too to see if he can get something in place when it's timbered. Is there something in place now? So like, I told him Monday and I'm waiting for.
Well, and the thing about it is, I mean, after the fact, that's a day late and a dollar short. So I'm not sure with the penalties or the fines that would be involved with him not already. I mean, what, what's he going to do? Go and backdate things and make it look like he had this in place four or five years ago?
I can't say.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not saying, you know, one way or the other, but he, all of this has to be in place prior to doing anything. You, you can't be chasing your tail and doing it after the fact when you've polluted somebody's pristine area that they have worked their entire life to have. I mean, Mr. Miller has horses, he has a nice barn, homestead, everything there, uh, garden.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, the time.
I let you, we go past three minutes, one minute. So if you want to finish your last statement, you can go ahead.
Larry used about five or six, so.
I'm on it.
And also, we need to understand.
I'll give you your time. You want interaction and then when you interact with you, I get penalized for it.
I paused him when he talks. I paused your time.
I told him to pause your time every time I gave him instructions to pause your time every time I talk. Okay, because, but you want interaction, then when people interact, you're taking my time. You're doing this. So do you want me just to sit here and wait? Do you want to go back to, thank you for your comment?
Oh, no, let's please not go back to those dinosaur days.
Okay, so.
But also Pine Creek is a stalked trout. But also, Pine Creek is a stocked trout stream.
Which I know.
Has anyone contacted the EPA yet? Because that is
As far as I know, Fish and Game were contacted, I think.
So, at this point, I believe
Hold on, the one guy from the township said they contacted Fish and Game.
Shane Casey came out.
Yeah.
There was, I can't even say the number, I have the test here, and I would like to show all three of you this test.
But if you go on the route that I advised you, you should show that test anyway.
Okay, I have, listen, I want to stop, I can't, we cannot have this in a community, seriously. If it's in a field of Mr. Harrington's place, if he uses these bios, that's
He does not, see, that's, I mean, I'm getting, Boots, no, hold on, Boots, no, let me say, when you was all, when this was all said, I specifically went up there to Boots' farm. I looked everywhere, walked all over the place, just to see for myself. He does not spread, and now what his family members do on another farm, that's up to them. But his farm in Rain Town, where he plants his strawberries and plants his stuff, because I go up there and, the first time I ever got strawberries was Ranford, Michigan, because I never picked strawberries. We went there and picked strawberries, the strawberries were amazing, but I went up there to look around, and I did not see any indication, anything at all, in any way, shape, or form that Boots spreads stuff on his fields in Rain Town down. So that's just, I just want to clear it up, now what family members do, that's, that's up to them, he, he can't, I can't control that guy.
For the record, when that was, I invited Linda and Jared to come up to my farm, and they never come up to my farm either, so
I was never invited.
You didn't invite me up to your farm, Boots.
You said I have to stay off of it.
Can I comment on that?
Because he pays under the table.
I'm not accusing Mr. Harrington, Harrington, of spreading, I don't care, I don't care, what he does, his family farm, it's not my good
Mike, you are here to see
But this is in a community, this is not five miles away from everybody else.
Yes, but Mike, you have You have admitted to me, though, you and Mr. Crumb's has a history, that this goes back, because when you purchased the property, and I get it, and we're trying to help you
It's a, it's a vendetta.
Well, I bet that's, see, and let's
He has no, he has no gain on that property, he's made a problem, seriously, he does not.
Okay, so, like I said, I cannot say this enough, I am trying to get it to all the proper channels, we probably We could keep talking about it, and talking about it, and talking about it, I am trying to get it to the proper channels, and we are trying to help you and the rest of the people at the West End of the county. And we will continue to do that, but the key, I don't know what else you want us to say here, I can't go up there and put a cease and desist I can't go up there to Skookoo County and say, yeah, we're putting a cease and desist order on you, I got to get DEP to do it. Now, as far as I know, DEP is not allowing him to spread anything, and from Natural Soil Products, can I specifically ask them about your situation? Maine said, what's his name, Rich, uh
Beluga?
Yeah, Beluga, I can't remember his last name, or
He also never got back to me, we were supposed to have meetings.
Yeah, well, he said, he said he'll take you on a tour, call him, and if not, I'll call him, make sure
I don't need the tour, I know exactly what I mean.
Okay, then, hold on, so, but he, I talked to him, and he said they will not allow him to spread on that field until the situation is resolved, so as far as I know, and I think you've stated, nothing's been spread on there since.
No.
Okay, so, we
There's enough there.
Yeah, but at least now, it's stopped for now.
It is, yes.
And, and we'll see what DEP comes up with, I'm waiting to see what DEP does with the soil erosion plan, or this rate, stormwater plan, I got to see what they because I got to wait till DEP gives it to us, whatever they're giving Frank to do. And we're going to hold him to that, that if he doesn't do what DEP tells him to do, then there's going to be a real problem, and I told them, if your well gets completely contaminated, that's a whole, I told Natural Soil Products and everybody.
It's going
That's a whole other level, that is about
It's way into your yard, honey, brother.
Okay, but you know what I'm saying? Mike, but thank God it didn't yet, and we're trying to stop it, so that's all I can say, I want to move on with our salary board meeting, because this is for salary board, you can finish your one comment.
So just make sure that County Conservation District, because according to Janelle, it is up to them, the County Conservation District, to come out onto Mr. Miller's property and conduct that inspection regarding any erosion or sediment that's laying on his property. They have to do that.
Okay.
So, whether it's Stephanie Lubinski, or whoever, but they need to file that report, do that inspection and file that report, and they are the ones who should be able to request that ENS plan for Mr. Crumb's, and he has to present it to them. So, at least maybe you guys could put some pressure on the Conservation District.
We can get, Carrie has been on the phone with them since Wednesday.
But they'll need to coordinate
I finally got them one day.
With Mr. Miller to do the inspection.
You know what will stop all of this, very simple, seriously? DEP will not take water samples, you know why? Because the water sample is proof that there's negligence of the, of the material, and they will not take the samples, and that will stop, it would say, you know what, this is it.
I'm going to ask you, how do I make, how do I make DEP take the samples?
Who's in charge of
Mike, how do I make, or Gary, or Boots, or our county, so how do I make DEP take the samples?
I'm not, I'm not holding you responsible.
Because we, we, trust me, I have brought all this up, I've brought up, this has been a lot, since I came in in January, I have met with people about air quality, monitoring, can we do other tests? Can we have money for other testing, can we do other things? I'm trying to explore every avenue, we're the people that have the least power to try to do anything.
I'm not accusing you, but somebody, somebody out there has, this cannot happen, it's Skookoo County.
And that person is your governor's office and the secretary, well, he's going to appoint, that's right, but he's appointing Secretary in DEP.
We've called We've just on, we can't even talk to them.
I cannot make the governor do, I can't make, I cannot make Harris do something.
That's why I think people have to be together.
That's right, and we're trying to help you as much as we can.
You've been a help, Larry, I have been, and so has Gary, and Byron, please come out and
You know, what, what topic are we, what
Thank you.
Call Drew Poffish.
I have called Drew Poffish, but it goes to Drew, and Drew tries to help us, but, you know, I see, I see some of your posts. And the people you accuse of all the stuff, you know, the Democrat governor, the Democrat secretary, wait, you posted, I watched it, you posted, I see it, I read your stuff. But I'm trying to elevate it as far as we can.
Let's not throw politics, let's hold on, let me, just let's not throw politics, let's get in here.
Go ahead, yeah.
We have five voices, four on the House of Representatives and a senator, those are the people that actually, you have five yelling, then to get that voice there too. Let's not leave them out, and I didn't want to bring that up, you keep throwing, you know, that, listen, arguing is not going to get you nowhere, nowhere at all. We are trying, like Larry said, but this finger, that finger, it's not going nowhere, we're trying to get to the thing, they, they understand. Every time that we got a call, I was on the phone saying, Drew, guess what, they're still having some problems up there.
Seven agencies I called, and they all passed it somehow.
Well, I know, and that's, we're, we're trying, we're trying to get to that
That's what they do to us, yes.
I understand, I understand.
We're trying to get to that, to get that answer, so
So now we're going to try with this, to do an impact, to try to get somebody to do an impact study at the West End of the county, to see how we have all these places in such a small area. And how somebody's going to come in and put another, even think about putting another place there, when you, by the crow flies, I think it's five miles.
Or even increased tonnage.
Right, you know, and all this increased tonnage, like, I don't know how you can have one here, and I'm going to put another one here. So, this is salary board
Well, in the state
May I respond to that?
Yep.
Low income, political affiliation, and uneducated people.
Wait, they do their research before they Hold on, Waste Management has stuff all over the world. And in, it doesn't matter political affiliation, they have it in Democrat states, Republican states, everywhere. Waste Management is a global company.
It's the part of the state they put it.
Yeah, they, they, but they're a vote, they have them in New York, they have them everywhere, like, this isn't just, this isn't just a Skookoo County problem. This isn't just a Pennsylvania problem, this is a bigger problem, and I, me personally, from my research, I think the thing to do is put in, like Singapore does it. Look at what Singapore does with their waste, and how they burn it, and what comes out of it. But if I would try to do that, or any company were trying to do that, it would be stopped.
I don't agree on that.
Right now, like then, like Shirley, what do you do with this stuff, what do you do with our sewage?
I still have an answer.
That's right, and nobody knows.
Well, I think we need to start with that, but the businesses
Okay, so, I want to, I want to move on with salary board, and then if you want to talk afterwards, I'll talk to you. Human Resources Office, personnel actions.
Yes, Commissioners, and tax claim, we have a wage adjustment for Denise McGinnity Hertzchop, Assistant Director, forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, effective eight twenty-one twenty-four, that won't require a motion. Also a tax claim, create the position clerk typist one per DM, effective nine three twenty-four. And finally, in tax claim, set salary for Deborah McDonald, clerk typist one per DM, fifteen point eight nine one three, effective nine three twenty-four. We have three items in court administration, create the position of treatment court coordinator, effective eight twenty-eight twenty-four. Create the position of law clerk, effective nine three twenty-four, that's per DM position. And final item in court administration is set salary for Raymond Dorian, law clerk, forty-two point zero four is the rate, nine three twenty-four is the effective date, and that is a per DM.
Can I have a motion for the tax claim wage adjustment for Denise Hertzchop?
Someone will second.
Or question, oh, go ahead, chair.
I know the department through with that date on it, A, it's in the middle of a pay period, and B, I just want you guys to make sure that that is the date you want to use, because I feel it should be July first. Just want you to clarify, it just takes fifteen minutes of someone's attention to get that finalized, I feel it should be July first, and I have absolutely no problem backdating that pay.
When was our solicitor date, will you amend it to that?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, so
I'm sorry, I've been saying it.
Yeah, but this, you know, everybody's saying this, that July first date was known, that the state was changing this rule long before July first. And then here the Commissioners, again, you know, it comes, July first comes and goes, and then, oh, we'll deal with it now. And this was known, I've had discussions about this, way before July first, and here we are in this situation again, so if not, then, then you know what I think should be done. If we don't pass this today, and because it's in the middle of the pay period, then, then what I think should be done is going to be dealt with this, that should pay her, the back wage benefit. So, I don't know if we want to table this, until we get clarification?
I think we should move that one.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do they have a second?
Second, but I would also check in the thing
The date, oh, we'll approve this, and then I'll look into the thing, but this is something that was known, that should have been dealt with before July first.
That ain't going to help the things that they tried wrong.
Yeah, so, so any question?
Commissioner Codura.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
And Controller Yekenship.
I'm sorry, I got a problem with the date.
Okay, well
I, I got, I approve, how about I approve this, because I agree with it, I just want
Well, we'll get clarification on the date, if we have to amend it, we'll do it at the next meeting, so, and we'll put it on the thing that might have to be amended, but I think it should have been dealt with before July.
So do I.
It should not be the end of August that this is coming up.
I'd ask to make sure that the minutes show that, that there has to be a change, that it's
If there has to be a change in the date, we'll do it at the next meeting, and make sure it's on the agenda for that.
So we have a vote from Controller Yekenship?
Yes. Okay, any new business? I'm motioning to Jared.